Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. North Ridgsville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, as we come together this evening, we thank you for the gifts of mutual respect regarding the common concerns that we share. We thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day, and we ask for your blessings upon the city of North Ridgsville and all who live, work, and visit our community. We pray in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call a roll. Swank?
Here.
Shafer?
Here.
Abins?
Here.
Winkle?
Here.
Awig?
Here.
DeVries?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Law Director?
Here.
Engineer?
Here.
Fire Instructor? Clerk of Council, here. Tonight, under the approval of minutes, we have before us the City Council Public Hearing Meeting Minutes dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We also have before us the City Council Meeting Minutes dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Again, hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Please note that Council has also received the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes dated February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. In a moment, I will open the lobby session. As a reminder to those with us this evening, the lobby session, in the interest of time, is not meant to be a question-and-answer or interactive session, however, it is an opportunity for the public to address the City Council as well as the administration regarding any matters pertaining to the general affairs of the city of North Ridgsville or the business of City Council. We do ask that you speak from the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. I do have some written submissions that I will take in the order in which they were received. So up first is Robin Zidek. Again, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
My name is Robin Zidek. I currently live at three five two seven four Greenwich Avenue here in North Ridgsville. In December of two thousand and eight, I purchased the property located at fifty-five seventy-one Wallace. I was informed at the closing table that the garage encroached slightly onto city property. I was informed that the only time this would become an issue is if I ever chose to tear down the garage and rebuild. I saw no reason that I would ever do that, so I proceeded. Last year, I put the property up for sale and disclosed the encroachment. The buyers inquired on it and requested something in writing from the city that they would never be required to tear down the garage. In mid-August, I visited City Hall and spoke with Tony Morgan. I asked if it was possible to get an easement. Ms. Morgan then sent an email to the mayor, law director, and head of the building department stating that I quote, "more interested in getting an easement from the city to continue the encroachment than in possibly filing a petition with council to vacate the street." A month and a half later, I received an email from Ms. Morgan that the city decided to vacate the property and that I would need to get consent from the neighboring owners, which I did, and I reported back that they all agreed and understood that there would be costs involved. The quote from the surveyor reflected that the cost was three thousand dollars for the survey, which included fees for the legal description for the properties at two hundred dollars each. Ms. Morgan informed me that the cost of the survey was to fall on me. When I questioned why, seeing as that it was the city's decision, I was advised that it was because I came to the city and it was within the ordinance. I reiterated that I asked for an easement. I was provided the city ordinance, which the first requirement states that a petition in writing must be submitted. At no time have I ever petitioned the city for this vacation. After a conversation with Mr. Jacob, he agreed that it didn't matter who paid for the survey as long as it was completed. The surveyor then sent out correspondence to each neighbor advising them that I would pay more than half of the total bill and the remaining would be split between three other parties. As of today, one party has paid their portion and the other two have not. Throughout this process, that I technically never requested, and to be quite frank, I've never been provided the correct information, and at times it seems like it's been misleading. The process was never fully explained, and I feel as though the city is offloading this property and taking advantage of my need to sell. I don't wish to cancel the vacation, but I'd like to voice my frustration and for you all to be aware of what has transpired. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shafer, for being here. Up next, Wayne Fox. Mr. Fox, again, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Wayne Fox. I live at three six seven 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 Center Ridge Road. Unlike a good neighbor, council was there. Have you ever had a situation where your neighbor has had a hiccup in their landscaping? Maybe a portion of their property didn't get mowed or trees have fallen? Being a good neighbor, you didn't just sit there and let the grass grow and branches litter the yard and your view. Instead, you pitch in and you help out. You weren't asked, you weren't looking for repayment, you were simply trying to establish a good neighborly relationship. As time goes by, you learn of some activity in the neighbor's property that concerns you. You reach out and invite the neighbor over to explain the concerns and hopefully be able to work together for a better understanding. Maybe it's lighting or placement of garbage. You would just like the neighbor to stop by and visually see your concerns just for the awareness. However, your neighbor ensures you he will be a good neighbor by keeping you informed but will not stop by your property to talk. Next, you receive an email with blueprints and a phone call consisting of, "I told you I would be a good neighbor, I emailed you the blueprints." No other explanation or discussion. You have to make sense of the blueprints on your own. After a couple of days of digesting what you received, your neighbor's neighbor asked about a letter from the city they received. It was a notification of the blueprints going for approval by the City Planning Commission. Odd, you didn't receive that letter. Why wouldn't you? Your property directly touches your neighbor's property and the notification is required. You decide to attend the meeting. You get there early and wonder which one of the people is your neighbor. You've never actually met before. During the meeting, you speak, you try to explain your concerns, referring to blueprint drawings and satellite images that make it difficult to convey what might bother you. In return, the neighbor testifies that in an effort to be a good neighbor, the blueprints were shared with me. The commission votes and the plans pass with a note for discussion towards some aspects of the plans. You feel somewhat defeated, you fully support the improvements for the neighbor's property, but you would like to express concerns that only that neighbor can truly clarify. So you reach out to some members of City Council. You send messages to four council members of seven, your ward representative, the two at-large representatives, and council president. All four respond to your vague message, three agree to visit and do so during the holiday weekend. The fourth promised to call but never did. Oh, well, no big deal. The three members who visited were attentive of your concerns and hopefully understand that they are, alternative solutions may not be easy or even possible, but they listened. Those council members have additional information to consider before they all just shrug and vote yes to pass the plans. In short, I want to thank Council President Jason Jacobs, at-large Georgia Awig, and Ward One Holly Swank for lending some of your valuable time during the holiday weekend. To at-large Marty DeVries, I understand the weekend was busy and you likely forgot to call. It's all good, really it is. I likely would have chosen family too. To the two ward reps that I did not reach out to or invite, Abins and Shafer.
Mr. Fox, I pardon the interruption, your three minutes has elapsed.
Can I get an extension?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I move to give Mr. Fox an additional.
Second.
Up to three minutes.
Motion was made by Swank and seconded by DeVries to allow Mr. Fox up to three minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
To the two ward representatives I did not reach out to or invite, Abins and Shafer, please don't take offense. I figured your wards have their own issues that you would need to address. Like a good neighbor, I opted to leave the seventh council member unnamed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next, we have a written submission for Tim Green. Mr. Green, if you could state your name and address, please.
My name is Tim Green, address seven two six one Maddock Road. My wife and I live at seven two six one Maddock Road adjacent to the phone company on Center Ridge. Our family has owned this property for sixty-eight years. We've seen how said property has changed in that time from a grass field to overgrown bushes to weeds and trees. My wife and I were somewhat surprised to find out the city had sold the property as we didn't know it was for sale, and I'm sure there's an explanation for that. So finding out that it was sold without our knowledge seemed very suspicious to us. Then we find out at last week's meeting that two lots were combined so there could be a parking lot put at this property. I also heard last week that our owner, the owner, wants to be a good neighbor, but never has he come over to our house to introduce himself or offer any plans for the property. We realized the city sold this property very secretously into someone that's influential to the city. So at this point, we realize the city is not going to sell a piece of property.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Corcoran.
The, I have to interrupt because I have to correct the statement. The property was sold by sealed bid. It was a process where it was advertised and the bids were sent in by sealed envelopes and they were opened on the bid day. That was the process, and the winner of the sale was the highest bidder. And there were other people in the room, it was all done in public, there was nothing secretive about it. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Please continue, Mr. Green.
After seeing the plans last week and seeing everything that could possibly go into this building, it's our request that the owner install at least a six-foot privacy fence the entire length of our property. Small shrubs and landscaping and strategic areas doesn't give any privacy for my family. We are not interested in walking out our back door and seeing a parking lot. In closing, we also feel there needs to be a study done for the traffic congestion that will be caused on Maddock Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there anybody else in attendance this evening who wishes to address council or the administration? All right, seeing none, the lobby session is now closed. We will move on to administrative reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. On tonight's agenda under first readings, we'll ask for the emergency clause on two thousand and twenty-four twenty-eight, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Personnel Research and Development Corporation, DBA, Pratt Co., for conducting a manager development program. And I know that we discussed that at budget season, we went into depth about that back in November. Council approved that expenditure and included it in the budget, and we're just looking to spend that money at this point and move forward with that program. As I recall, everybody was pretty happy with the idea that we were doing something like that. The Master Plan Steering Committee will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, February twenty-first, at six PM in the police training room to review round three public input and the master plan document and discuss the next steps in the adoption process. For more information on that, visit ridgivilleready.com. The city is partnering with NOAACA to engage in a public process to gather from, community input for a citywide active transportation plan. The plan builds upon the recommendations from our master plan process in regards to connectivity and safety. The goal is to develop an interconnected trail and sidewalk network that links residents and workers to local and regional assets. That meeting is going to be held on Monday, March twenty-fifth, at six thirty PM at LCC's Ridge Campus. You can visit the city's website for more information. We are announcing our Hometown Heroes Project. The city of North Ridgsville recognizes the great sacrifice that our military members make in serving our country. To honor these men and women, local families are able to purchase Streetscape banners through the Hometown Heroes Project, which will be installed on Bainbridge Road in the vicinity of the new North Ridgsville Veterans Memorial at South Central Park. In celebration of the opening of the memorial, banners will be hung from Memorial Day through Veterans Day for two years, and then the banner will be returned to the owner. Visit the city's website to download and complete the application, and due to the limited availability of polls for display, banner applications will be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis. The primary is scheduled for March nineteenth this year, and in order to vote for this election, you must be registered to vote by today. Good news, if you haven't, the Board of Election is open until nine PM tonight to register to vote. And there's two important reasons for you to do so, if you haven't done already, to register. We have issue seven is a proposed two-point-two-five-mil levy renewal, and that is to provide funds for staffing and equipment needed to operate the city's paramedic services. Because this is a renewal, that means there are no new taxes, and we passed this levy in nineteen ninety-five for the first time, and it's been continuously renewed since that point. We have thirty-nine paramedics on staff, and every North Ridgsville firefighter is required to be a paramedic. It's a huge part of our fire department budget and provides for that ambulance service, and it is desperately needed, and we would appreciate the community's support on that issue. Issue eight is the North Ridgsville Branch Library renewal levy, which provides for their operating revenues for our library. That is about eighty-five percent of their operating levy or revenue, so that is obviously very needed as well, and we would appreciate the community's support with that also. At this point, I make the motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment employment of a public employee or official and to consider the purchase of real property. And I think that's it today, for those two reasons.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swank to, excuse me, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swank to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing those matters just explained by the mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, clerk. At this time, we will adjourn temporarily and do executive session.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. We are now back in our regular session. Mr. Mayor, please continue with your report.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 2024-26 is before you today to revise Chapter 1444, Building Permits and Fees. The hope is to remove some of the ambiguity, ambiguity, to remove some items which are oversee, and to remove some items which are overseen by the Engineering Department. These items would then be relocated to a new chapter, 1010, Engineering Permits and Fees. As it stands right now, the engineering permits are sort of piggybacking off of the building chapter, and it's been very difficult for our front office staff, not only to process, but also difficult to record for approvals, and I think this will just clean up some of that process. Moving on, the route road closure between Center Ridge and Bainbridge for waterline work affiliated with St. Peter's Church was moved to this Thursday. That work is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM until they finish, hopefully just a few hours. The water will remain on. Lorraine County Engineers Office, who oversees the inspection and maintenance of six bridges in our community, recently inspected the bridge over Ridgeway Ditch on Sugar Ridge, which is approximately 500 feet west of Maddock Road. They appraised it as a three, which is not too good, out of nine. Therefore, new weight limitations have been posted for the bridge, which only really affects the special vehicles like garbage trucks, potentially our fire trucks, and other construction vehicles. We are in the process of notifying local businesses in that area. Although this area is not designated as a truck route, we did want to inform everyone to be aware. In recent discussions with the county, they are going to pursue trying to apply for some funding to replace that bridge, hopefully soon. We are wrapping up our 2023 Backflow Program due to inactivity from some of our property owners. We have had to issue approximately 15 citations to our residential customers who are not compliant with their backflow devices, as well as another 15 citations to our commercial customers who did not adhere to the backflow inspection requirements. We are currently working on our commercial business audits, which are required by the Ohio EPA. We have to audit everybody within a five-year period, so approximately 20% of our commercial businesses every year have to be audited. Our consultant, Bulldog Backflow Services, is helping perform those audits, and we have about 80 done so far. It is that time of year again that we may be losing some of our roadway due to the freeze-thaw process. I just want to remind everybody that there is a form on the City of North Ridgeville's website, specifically on the Service Department's homepage. There's a link on the right-hand side. This form can be used to submit a variety of issues, including potential potholes. It can also be used for ditch blockages, water main leaks, and sewer blockages. Lastly, Engineering, with the help of the Service Garage, has identified six drive culvert pipes in roadside ditches that were in disrepair and need of replacement. These pipes were found to be structurally unsound and potentially at risk for the traveling public, as well as a potential ditch impediment. Notifications were given to these homeowners to replace these pipes, and I am happy to report that all of them have been replaced. And that concludes my report.
All right, very good. Thank you. Council is also in receipt of the January 2024 Water Distribution and EPA Report, as well as the January 2024 Building Division Report. There are no council committee reports, correspondence, or old business. Under New Business this evening, we have a new liquor permit request. Clerk, if you could please read that request.
A request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new permit request for CAPL Retail LLC at 32393 Lorraine Road.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
I'd like to move not to request a hearing so this permit can be sent to the state for its final disposition by March 12th.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by AWIG to not request a hearing in order for this request to be sent to the state for final distribution, excuse me, disposition by the deadline. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Also under New Business, there were several, the Planning Commission took several actions at its February 13th, 2024, regular meeting. Clerk, if you could please read the first item for Liberty Elementary School.
Liberty Elementary School, 5700 Jaycocks Road, permanent parcel number 0700020113005, North Ridgeville City Schools, 3462 Bainbridge Road. North Ridgeville, Ohio, proposal consists of constructing modular classrooms at Liberty Elementary School, property zone R1, Resident District. Planning Commission action by a vote of four to zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swank to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the proposal for Liberty Elementary School. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. Clerk, please read item number two for Luai Abuasi.
Luai Abuasi, 35970 Center Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 0700021102040. Applicant, Qualwasi, Pioneer Engineering, 3490 West 46th Street, Cleveland, Ohio 44102. Proposal consists of repurposing vacant auto repair shop for retail use, property zone B3 Highway Commercial District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of three to one.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens.
Quite frankly, they're going to be improving this property appearance-wise, both landscaping and the building itself. There is enough parking spots for this particular business according to the codes, so I move to approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Winkle to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the proposal by Luai Abuasi. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. Clerk, please read item number three for Wink Bell Incorporated.
Wink Bell Incorporated, 36885 Center Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 0700028103001 and 2. Owner, Wink Bell Incorporated, 5640 Broad Boulevard, North Ridgeville, Ohio 44039. Proposal consists of an addition to existing building, parking expansion, lot consolidation, property zone B5 Architectural Business District. Planning Commission action by a vote of four, nothing, with the condition that the administration takes a look at the buffering requirements along the south property line and along the existing dwelling to the east to provide additional buffering with evergreens and/or planning materials they deem fit.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
Due to potential conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Winkle. Mr. Abens?
Mr. President, the owner, the new owner of this particular property is improving it, also bringing it up to codes that includes ADA by adding elevators, bathrooms, things of that nature, in hopes to attract good businesses that will be good taxpayers in the future. I move to approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by AWIG to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the proposal for Wink Bell Incorporated. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I wasn't able to make the planning meeting, but I did read the minutes when they were posted. I have a couple of questions and concerns with property owners not being notified. I've talked to the deputy clerk. She's explained it, but I just feel at this time that I can't support it, so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Mrs. Swank. Is there any other discussion at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. AWIG.
Yeah, I listened to the Mr. Fox's concerns and went there and observed and so forth, and I know what he's talking about, but I feel that the owner being a good resident of North Ridgeville, I think he'll do the proper thing in terms of the buffering that's required, and he is taking a property that is kind of an eyesore in North Ridgeville and making it better.
Thank you, Mrs. AWIG. Any additional comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Yeah, as Mr. Fox said earlier, he did contact me through text. I was not able to get back to him, and I do apologize for that. I did have a number of things going on, and I do know that the landlord has fixed up a number of buildings in our community. That building's been sitting alone for a long time. I know the city has put money into it as far as trying to put a roof on it years ago, and then they tried to sell it again and again. I know the character of the individual who owns it, who does work well with other business owners, and, you know, I'm going to support it, but I do want to say that I'm not shrinking my responsibilities in any way. I want to let you know that I was intending to give you a call back, so I do apologize for not getting back to you. So, there's a lot going on, but with that said, I just wanted to explain, you know, that I think it's a good thing that we're going to move forward and start fixing up some of these buildings that have been abandoned for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVries. Any additional comments?
You know, as we have heard, obviously, there has, the abutting property owners have expressed some concerns regarding this project, like many projects that we see in the city. This proposal has been reviewed by Planning and Economic Development Director Lieber, Chief Building Official, Mr. Furston, members of our Engineering Department, members of our Fire Department. It's gone under review of the Planning Commission and was approved there as well. Throughout that review process, it has been determined that this project does meet all of the requirements, codes, ordinances of the City of North Ridgeville in order to improve the property in this nature. So, for that reason, I will be voting yes. I would encourage the property owner to maintain an open dialogue with the neighbors and perhaps, you know, attempt to mitigate some of the concerns, if possible, within reason. So with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle? AWIG?
Yes.
Recused. DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
By a vote of four to two, the motion passes. Clerk, please read item number four, Ordinance 2024-4.
Nordens amending the zoning map of the City of North Ridgeville such that permanent parcel number 0700023101074 located at 8371 Avon-Beldon Road be rezoned from R1 Residence District to I2 Light Industrial District.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swank to approve the Planning Commission's approval of Ordinance 2024-4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. Hearing none. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Recess is dispensed. Move on to first readings. Up first is 2024-26.
Nordens providing the amendment of Chapter 1444, Building Permits and Fees of the North Ridgeville Building and Housing Code, and the establishment of a new Chapter 1010, Engineering Permits and Fees in the Streets, Utilities, and Public Service Code.
2024-26 will be referred to the Buildings and Lands Committee. 2024-27?
Nordens authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Duane Manning Realty LP for the purchase of real property in the amount of $250,000 plus closing costs.
2024-28?
Nordens authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Personnel Research and Development Corporation, DBA Bradco, for the conducting of a manager development program for up to 10 of the City of North Ridgeville's employees, in the amount of $35,000 plus $2,100 per each additional participant, along with other expenses pertaining to this program.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by AWIG to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-28. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated in my report earlier.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by AWIG to add the emergency clause to 2024-28 for the reasons stated earlier in the meeting by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. All opposed, say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-28 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens?
As you may be aware, I had difficulty with making this an emergency, not with the legislation itself, but hearing that there is a time constraint on this particular program, I will be in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Abens. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero, and 2024-28 is adopted.
2024-29?
Nordance amending Ordinance Number 6121-2023 of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. De Vries?
Motion dispensed with the second, first and second, second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by De Vries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-29. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. De Vries?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause so that we can meet our financial obligations in a timely manner?
Second.
It was moved by De Vries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-29 in order for the city to meet its financial obligations in a timely manner. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. It was moved by De Vries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-29 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, seven to nothing, and 2024-29 is adopted.
Moving on to second readings. 2024-4?
Nordance amending the zoning map of the City of North Ridgeville such that permanent parcel number 0700023101074 located at 8371 Avon-Belden Road be rezoned from R1 Residence District to I2 Light Industrial District.
2024-13?
Nordance amending Chapter 1480 and Chapter 660 and repealing Chapter 1476 and Chapter 650 of the North Ridgeville Codified Ordinances to make improvements and clarifications to requirements for property maintenance.
2024-14?
Nordance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a 12-month period according to law and in a manner prescribed by law for the purchase of chemicals to be used by the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Under third readings, up first, 2024-7?
Nordance authorizing the mayor to purchase ultrasonic water meters and appurtenances from Badger Meter Incorporated not to exceed $200,000 for the calendar year 2024.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Abens to adopt 2024-7. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-nothing, and 2024-7 is approved.
2024-8?
Nordance to amend Chapter 1062 Cemeteries of the North Ridgeville Codified Ordinances to revise regulations.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to adopt?
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-nothing, and 2024-8 is adopted.
2024-10?
Nordance amending Chapter 215 Lean Procedures of the North Ridgeville Administration Code.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-10. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2024-10 is adopted.
2024-25?
Nordance vacating Elm Street, an unused undeveloped street between Wallace Boulevard and Cornell Avenue, and abutting four properties, one which encroaches into Elm Street upon action initiated by City Council.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-25. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I heard what the constituent was speaking about earlier with what's going on with the survey, but we have had a lot of meetings on this. We tabled it. We had another meeting, and now that we're at the third reading, it's just we kind of have to do something with it, so that's why I move to adopt it and vote yes for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Swank. Yeah, I have been in touch with Mrs. Zidek for several, several times over the last several months, and I spoke to her recently as well prior to tonight's meeting. As she indicated during the lobby session, despite her frustrations with the process to sort of get us here tonight, she still is in favor of the passage in order to be able to proceed with the final, you know, finalizing the sale of her home.
Mr. Jacobs? The neighbors that are discussing a natural proceeding?
Mrs. Zidek, now that we can't entertain the back-and-forth discussion at this time, is there any other discussion at this point? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero, and 2024-25 is adopted.
Under meeting announcements, the next regular council meeting will be held on Monday, March 4th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Do any of the council members or administration have any final comments this evening? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.